Calling the meeting to order. For the work session today, we'll start with the budget review with Tadvi, please.
Thank you. We're just here to give you a quick update on what we've done with the budget since we last met and talked about it back in late March. It's the last Wednesday in March, March 25. So, since then, obviously, things have changed dramatically due to the COVID-19 and the shutdown and the news out of peer where revenues are obviously, as they are in the entire world, they're down. So, then there was the, kind of put off our next, our regular hearings on this because there was question whether legislature, the governor had signed the 2% increase, but that, there was talk that the legislature would come back in June and possibly modify that. And then with the federal stimulus money and kind of a question about whether or not that could be used to, for revenue replacement, the governor has basically said, "We're not going to come back in June. We're gonna, we're going to maybe come back in September." And based on that, our salary increases are tied to what, what, what the changes in state aid. And since the change in state aid, it's going to be 2% in July 21, we decided to go forward, but make some contingency, do some contingencies to, to get ready for what we think is inevitable cut, whether it's next fiscal year or the fiscal year thereafter. So, what we had changed, and it's on the screen there, we got generally, these are changes that have happened to the budget. Most of these are level fives, which are expansion packets, but here's a couple other. We had, we had listed level two for middle school and, but the dollar amount in there was level, level four. So, that was 120.
Can't see this. Marking on it. What page are we on?
On page 10, yes. So, yes, we're on page 10 of the budget document. That's online for anybody listening in. So, so we had listed as level two, but we had the level four amount in there. So, that's $123,000. The secondary behavior program was a one additional middle school odyssey classroom. That was $115,000 growth. That was one of the level fives. Counseling services, a decrease of $86,000. That dropped from a level five and expansion to level four and eliminated one additional elementary counseling position. Now, one, you know, an expansion of one. Staff development was a decrease of $146,000. That's, that's a half an FTE for an elementary admin intern and page training in the summer was, was that level five. And then the committed funds, we had planned to do a 2.75% increase because that is the, the board's option each year. It extends the length of the contract if, if we do that. We had done that for several years. But, but with the two, with the 2% and possible probable reduction in the next two years of state aid, and we thought that would probably be foolish to do that additional 0.75. So, we, we met the contractual obligation of, of matching the 2% increase. So, that was about $830,000. In the capital outlay fund, because there were savings in the general fund here, we, we had a, we had a surplus if we moved all of that $4 million that we plan to do out of the capital fund. So, it's just under 2.9 million to balance the budget for next year if there's no mid-year cut in the budget. And then, we had 15 positions that we had not filled and we're just holding on those 15 teaching positions just to see where we're at. If we get the word that there isn't going to be a, a cut in mid-year next year, then we'll free up the principals to hire those jobs. But, so those are the, those are the changes to the budget. Other than that, it's quite the same as what we looked at before. I just wanted to give an, oh, just one more thing on that timing. We were gonna have, we were going to have, in the first board meeting in April, we were going to have the first regular meeting. We were going to have a tentative approval of the budget. We obviously were in a limbo, so we didn't do that. So, we're just gonna have the, we're gonna skip the tentative approval process and just have the regular approval that we do on the first, the annual meeting, the first regular meeting in July. So, that, that's the plan on the timing. And we'll come back to you with that budget. Obviously, if you have any questions in the meantime, we can answer, or if you have some questions right now.
And no one signed up for public input, so we will skip over into questions. Any board members have questions? I just thank you for all your work. I think this is a prudent budget in the fact that we have a lot of unknowns out there with the state, but yet we're holding to our contractual obligations to our units in the district. I, last week, I asked you a bit about the funding that could possibly flow through the state through the CARES Act and the governor's office. And maybe, could you touch on that, how we haven't put that in this budget?
Right.
Because we don't know if we'll receive that funding, and if we do, there's some other changes that could occur.
Yeah, there's kind of two fairly obvious chances. One is, one you have to apply for. One's a formula grant, you have to apply for it, but it's yours as long as you spend it in an appropriate way. We are right now, as you all know, we're working on three different modes of coming back to school next year and the different, you know, even in the regular traditional model, you're going to have additional expenses that, that we haven't had. Those haven't been budgeted. So, we're preparing, we're preparing a budget for each of those modes. And, and so we will have about $4.4 million of that formula grant, ESSER, I think is what it's called. I don't know what it stands for. But, ESSER grant that will be available and that money will probably go to funding the additional increases of that, of that, of those different options that, that we're, no matter what, even if we come back normal, there's going to be, you have 25 kids in a classroom or whatnot, you're still going to have additional expenses. So, we're holding that money back for that. And then there's also about, a little over $5 million from the governor's office to fund expenses that the ESSER funds weren't enough for in, in school districts. And, so if we got our per student share of that, and there's no guarantee of that, but if we, that'd be about a million dollars. So, we, we will, when we get all this figured out here in the month of June, we will apply for the ESSER grant and then anything over, expenses over that, that we might have, we will apply for hopefully a million dollars of that, of the governor's fund for education.
Will any of those monies be eligible for, like, counseling and some of the things of the year?
Yeah, transitioning back and some of these things to, for, yeah. There's some broad, in the, honestly, in the ESSER fund, there's kind of a very broad category of, of allowable, so.
Any further questions? Seeing none. We're done with the report. We don't have any action on that. Thank you very much, Mr. B. We'll move on to the update of the boundaries. I just want to first thank Doug Morrison and his team for all the work and questions, both from us and from community members regarding the boundaries. Your responses and information have been very helpful to us in the ability to come to where we're going to be today, actually, where now the board is taking this on. I remind the community that no one showed up for public input today, but on Monday, June 8th and Monday, June 22nd, there'll be two more opportunities for public input at our board meetings. So, please use your right to do that, or either email, call us, or use the Let's Talk option is still open for them. Is that correct?
Well, thank you for the opportunity. It's been a fun process and it's been challenging, but I've had a great team that has risen through all those challenges so far. So, so just going to start off and acknowledge the, the actual report that was produced, and that was Joe Donovan helped put us together, put it together. Joe's been with us since the beginning, although, you know, because of the change in the process, it's just been more in a virtual form, but he's been there to help us. And he's, he's listening here at this meeting, but felt from a technological perspective, and it was just easier for me to walk through the documents. So, this is a document. I'm gonna, I put a PowerPoint together that essentially walks you through the data in here. And so, we'll, we'll kind of start through that. So, really, if you think about where we've been for this phase, we basically started back in August. That was when we first met and tried to come to grips with how we were going to put all this together. And we were looking at different softwares and things of that nature. So, we've been at it since August of 2019. Lot of district internal work that we did to try to just put the systems in place and figure out where all the kids are going and draw boundaries and really get things ready for the, the boundary committee process. And so, then we launched into the boundary committee, sometimes called task force. A lot of task forces out there. I've tried to call it the boundary committee, but we, we made, we had four of those, which were very engaging. And then we went on to the community input session, which we moved to a, well, we, we've always taken that Let's Talk feedback online. And I think we've been really responsive at getting back to people and, and that's been pretty steady, other than we had a few, you know, flare ups once in a while based on things that were going on in the community, but it's just been very steady and, and very respectful dialogue between people in the district. And that continues to, to go on today. And then we had the virtual community engagement sessions that were, Dr. Mahler did a great job of taking the community through that and, and getting that feedback. And, and that was very helpful. It's not the way any of us had originally thought that it would transpire, but in the end, just like with remote learning, we were able to pivot and with technology and still take that input. And I think we had pretty good, pretty good response to that. So, if you look at what we heard from the boundary committee, we, we took some options to them that we had created internally to the district because you have to start there. And we, you know, there was a lot of ideas given. We had 33 people from across the community, all different levels of school and, or parents. And so, some things that we heard, you know, when, after we went through it, they, they asked us to explore some options for Whittier. And we, we did look at those internally and we gave them some, some feedback on those. They wanted, at the time, we were only going to have three boundary committee meetings, and they wanted to have a fourth. And, and we thought that was a great idea, and it was just kind of a, brought a finality to them. So, after the virtual meetings, we had a, a wrap-up task force meeting. And so, we did acknowledge that and, and ended up having that. There was a lot of discussion on location of specialty schools, right? So, I can't say there was a consensus. There's just a lot of discussion and what ifs. And so, we walked through that. And, and then, and then there was also a lot of discussion on the balancing of socioeconomic, you know, just the whole discussion around that, the status versus geographical considerations when you do boundaries. And so, I can't say there was a consensus one way or the other, but there was just good, healthy dialogue. And, and so that was obviously something that was on their mind as we went through the process. And then, open enrollment, grandfathering, we solicited their feedback on that. Lots of ideas, lots of discussion. Again, I don't think there was a consensus one way or the other that came out of the group, but it was, it helped us to look at some different things in that regard. So, out of the task force, we had many options. We ended up with, I'll say, four at middle school. And we, it would, we knew we couldn't bring four to the community, right? It would just be too overwhelming. And so, we ended up having them vote. And we came down to two options, which are middle school A and middle school B. And so, that's what we went forward to the community with, knowing that we could still change them, but they were anchors so that we could take feedback and it was, wasn't so overwhelming to the community. And so, I would, I would tell you, as we walk through this, the biggest difference between option A and B is how the West Side was divided up. And that was sort of the task force. We looked at many We looked at many options on how to, how to make the west side look differently. So, in Option A, uh, really, uh, you look across in that table there, is, is really how we built the boundaries. We built them from east to west. So we started with Ben Rifle, and we knew we had to get, you know, 900 to 1,000 kids in Ben Rifle, so we looked really at the schools that were, uh, you know, uh, geographically close to that school, and we ended up with Harvey Dunn, Cleveland, John Harris, um, and Rosa Parks, um, and, uh, that really put a good mix into that school. And so, um, that's, that's how Option A was, uh, compiled, and then you kinda walk your way across and you can see the impact to each school. So, uh, in Whittier, we were able to bring the rest of LBA in, because today it's split between McGovern and Whittier, so that was a, uh, something good for us. And then you can see, moving out, you can see Cleveland and, and part of Rosa Parks. And then, you work your way across and you can see, uh, how it impacted Patrick Henry, uh, you know, some, the good thing about this option is we were able to bring Susan B. Anthony and Robert Frost in its entirety to go to Patrick Henry. Today it's split. So, again, we were able to sort of bring, uh, whole school, uh, feeders there. The, the biggest difference in this option is it has, in the way that we look to, uh, alleviate some of the enrollment on the west side, is we have JFK moving to Edison. So that's the, probably the signature piece of this, uh, and, of this option. And JFK, um, at, at once, historically was part of Edison, but, uh, we looked at different options. We looked at, you know, moving Pettigrew, skip using it up around. We knew that the Memorial, the Discovery Area was a, a walk area, that would be hard to move, um, anywhere. And then, uh, in Option B, I'll show you that, that was another scenario. But this is, this, the predominant thing here is, is, uh, moving JFK over to Edison, um, and then, uh, and then Hawthorne, uh, and then trying to level up when, um, when we moved, um, Harvey Dunn and John Harris out of, um, Patrick, we had some more room to bring kids in there, so we brought in, uh, Hawthorne. And then the other thing I would say in this option is that it moves the, it, it keeps the Spanish Immersion Program at Edison, and it moves the Honor Program at Patrick. And we'll talk about that later in the presentation, but, um, those two cohorts are getting larger, and so, um, it, it worked out nicely to split them, at least as far as trying to get consistent enrollment and move one to, uh, Patrick and one to Edison, still keeping them, uh, central. Option B, uh, I would say the signature piece of that is, uh, the way that we alleviated the, in this option, the, uh, the, the west side, um, enrollment was we moved the Oscar Howe, uh, part of Oscar Howe, it's the, it's the current bus area, so Oscar Howe, today we bus kids from, uh, from their neighborhood up to Memorial, uh, and we took that area and we, instead of going to Memorial, we were going, uh, in this option, bussed it up to George McGovern. Um, and then the also, uh, the area that's the west of the T. Ellis Road, the Cherry Lake area, uh, and there's a couple other, uh, nubs, I call them, out there, and then the Lennox Land that we, uh, acquired, would all go to, uh, McGovern instead of, uh, Memorial. And so, that's largely the, the signature items with Option B. Most everything, uh, for the, and then this, this also, since we don't have JFK going to Edison, uh, we had room to keep both, uh, specialty programs at Edison in this scenario. Um, and so, those are kind of the signature, uh, changes with, uh, with each option. And then ultimately, you look at your enrollment under each option, uh, we were trying to keep Ben Rifle, uh, what, what we heard from the city, from, from a growth perspective, we had a couple city folks, uh, on the Task Force, um, that gave us a presentation on growth, and, uh, they said the two growth areas that are still, uh, yet to come in the city are, uh, a little bit in the Ben Rifle area, the southeast, and then, of course, in the, up in the McGovern area. I would say the McGovern area is much longer term, um, but it, it'll happen eventually, but it's, it's, if you looked at planned and unplanned housing units, there's, uh, there's very little that is planned, uh, in the immediacy in the, in the McGovern area. So, we knew we had to leave room in Ben Rifle, so we tried to make that at about, you know, 900, uh, kids, uh, allowing for some growth there. Edison, um, about where it's at now. McGovern, a little bit smaller. Again, we know that eventually, uh, it'll, it'll grow into that, and especially with the land that we now have with Lennox will, um, I think, uh, Business Manager Veek forecasted it out, and that eventually could be about 1,000 kids in total, so maybe 100 kids per grade, so that will grow over time. Memorial, uh, you know, in that 1,100 range, down from the, the 1,400 that it's at now. Patrick Henry, um, in that 1,000 range, and, and Whittier, a little bit less than it is today, um, you know, mostly because we moved Rosa Parks, um, down into, uh, Ben Rifle, but that's, that's probably a good size for that school, and eventually when, you know, if that school is replaced, then, you know, we'll look at the numbers then and, and size it based on that, so. The highlights of middle school. So then we went on to high school, um, and we, how we originally formulated Option A was that we took as many middle schools as we could, and we fed them into, uh, high schools. So in Option A, we were able to feed, and I'll, I'll show that in a minute, but we were able to feed four middle schools in their entirety into, uh, Option, into specific high schools, and then the other two middle schools were, were split slightly. Through the process of the Task Force, uh, and we did the same with Option B. However, since it's so similar, uh, the, the middle school options, except for the west side, Option A and B on high school became almost the same or redundant. And then the Task Force and some of the feedback that we had through Let's Talk at this point, we heard a lot of feedback from, uh, the area, I'll, I'll just say the, the north-south border between Jefferson and Roosevelt, right? Lots of ideas of where that should be. In Option A, you can see we came all the way down, trying to keep Discovery together, uh, and, you know, that cohort together, and that was really, and moving that up to, um, up to McGovern. And that's, so that's why you see that line come down. Well, through the feedback, um, you know, is there any way you can get more of those kids into that Roosevelt area? So we heard that, um, and we came back to the last Task Force meeting, I think, with an Option C, which essentially, uh, moved that border, uh, up to, uh, 26th Street and, and across. So you can see, uh, we were able to take that Discovery area and bring a lot of that into the Roosevelt area, and we'll, we'll talk more about that as we go, but that, and then, and then as we, uh, and then we changed the boundary between Lincoln and Roosevelt, uh, we brought, uh, more of that into Lincoln. So those are the two chains, you know, pretty much the differences between, uh, these two So this is a recap, just, uh, in words, what I was just talking about. So we were, uh, Option A, again, we were looking more or less at feeding, uh, middle schools into, into high schools in their entirety. Um, and then you can see the under C, you can see that, uh, moving the boundary to 26th Street, um, changing the boundary for Lincoln, uh, between, between that and Roosevelt to Western Avenue instead of Minnesota, and then we, we did a little bit on the north side at, at, uh, around 6th Street, so. So then when we look, when you roll it all up, you have to start with, uh, a base number of, so we, we take 25,000 pens, if you, I call them pens, they're like little dots on a map, they're people's address, which we don't, we have random IDs assigned to them, and then we, uh, we look at how many are in each, uh, home attendance center, and we say, okay, that's the number of kids that should go to that school, but then we know there's some changes, so we know that we have to factor in, uh, New Tech, um, and then we factor in open enrollment, and we have to make a guess, or at least, uh, put a stake in the ground as far as what open enrollment would look like, um, and we'll talk about that in more detail as we go. But then on that bottom table there, you get to, uh, what I would call your, uh, your post-open enrollment, post-New Tech enrollment, as best as we can figure, and you can see, uh, the size of the schools under each option. So, um, Jefferson, uh, obviously, that's not including New Tech, so Jefferson with New Tech would be, uh, about the 1,700, 1,800 number. Lincoln is a little higher because of the, uh, open enrollment that is going there, uh, today, and then Roosevelt, um, coming down into, uh, into, uh, the range that you see there on the table, and then Washington. So, at that point, under the options, we were able, we felt pretty good about, um, trying to give a couple scenarios that balanced, uh, the enrollment, uh, across the, the high schools as, as best we could. And, and we'll cover more components of that in the, in the presentation as we move on. So those are the options that we took forward to the community, and, uh, and so we had the virtual, uh, engagement sessions, so people were either logged on via YouTube or K-Learn, and they could dial in and they could ask questions, and we had an operator, and I thought it worked really great. But what was, what was on their mind when they called in? Safe routes to schools, um, was a big thing that, um, they talked about, right? And, uh, transportation options to, uh, the new, the new high school, and you'll, you'll see a lot of themes here that sort of, uh, match up, much like when we opened McGovern, and it was out there on its own, no sidewalks, no, you know, there's a little bit of the same concern with, with Jefferson, right? Is nobody knows what to expect as far as transportation up there? And so there's just some unknowns, and so people are just questioning, are you gonna have trip or buses and all that type of stuff? And, and we assure them that we work with the city and, on safe routes to school and all that type of stuff, but it was good, good feedback. The location of the, uh, middle school Spanish Immersion and Honors Program, uh, you know, certainly we had people, uh, calling in on that, some that, uh, wanted to keep it at one location, um, and, uh, um, and so, um, others that think it should go to, to somewhere else. So, um, open enrollment and grandfathering. I think as we got closer to defining the boundaries, it, the dialogue, at least in my opinion, shifted from not so much the boundaries, but where's my specific kid gonna go? My kid that's a senior or junior and siblings, and what if they're in this band or this, right? And it started to become very much more, um, those types of discussions. And so there was a lot of, uh, calling in, and Dr. Mahler did a great job at facilitating through that, um, those dialogues, right? Just trying to be respectful of people and, um, and, and what their, their needs were. The Jefferson-Roosevelt boundary, right? Where do you draw the line? Was a, uh, was a, an item that was talked about. Programming at the new high school. Is the new high school gonna have everything, right? Um, and so, talking them through that is that, you know, yes, we, it's gonna be a full-service high school and full programming and, you know, and so, and then the distance to their proposed assigned school versus their current school. Um, and, you know, it's, well, I'm 1.2 miles from this school, and I'm 2 miles from this school. Yep, and it exists today, just like on, uh, on the, uh, on the east side, uh, people are closer to Lincoln than Washington, but they're in the Washington District. So we have those, those, uh, examples today, but people, um, you know, it was, it was certainly on their minds, and they, uh, we had some number of people that, uh, have looked at that and given us a lot of feedback on that. So, so that's kind of the feedback that, if you look at it, uh, from the virtual engagement sessions, uh, that, that we heard, uh, quite a bit from. Let's Talk. So we, um, we have, I think, over 700, I think, and, uh, 700 submissions, uh, today, uh, through today, and, uh, so you see things, uh, same types of themes that you saw on people that call in, and, uh, like I said, it's been a steady, steady stream. We saw a lot of feedback when we first came out with the options, or the Task Force was developing the options. We saw, uh, a kind of a ground swell, and then it kinda went silent for a while, and then as the options made it. So each step away is, is kinda created, um, some movement in a number of Let's Talk submissions, um, and so, but you hear things like the, the Cherry Lake area, that the people, uh, that live in homes west of the T. Ellis Road, uh, that in different scenarios we have going to different places, they, they wanna stay in the, in the Memorial-Roosevelt pipeline, heard from them. Open enrollment options for middle and high school, um, we, we've heard, uh, from, about that. Specialty schools, we talked about, equalizing, uh, diversity, um, the JFK kids, um, the same basically, uh, items that you heard in the virtual sessions we hear through Let's Talk, and so it's been very consistent. Open enrollment. So when we look at open enrollment, um, we, you know, we've, we've kinda looked at this, and we've said, what's the current pipeline of students that are open enrolled? Um, and obviously, it points to, uh, Lincoln having a lot, a large open enrollment population. And there are several reasons for that, but you can see between just in-district open enrollment and out-of-district enrollment, they have, uh, you know, between 500 and 600 kids that open enroll, uh, to Lincoln, and, uh, and then obviously, that comes from Roosevelt, Washington, and Jefferson, uh, in the case of in-district enrollment. We'll talk a little bit about where that open enrollment comes from. So, all of these, um, you know, these, uh, dots on the map are essentially, uh, kids that attend Lincoln High School. So this is where their physical residence is. So just think, that, that's all those dots are, is the kids that attend Lincoln. The blue in the middle are the, would be the ones in their attendance area. So what it, it allows you to visually see where the kids are open enrolling from, into Lincoln. And so, what you see is a couple of themes, uh, just as far as in-district enrollment. You see the southeast portion, uh, that Washington area, the southern part of Washington, many of those kids open enroll over to Lincoln because it's closer, right? And we've had capacity to, uh, to allow that, and so that's one of the, the pipeline that feeds into there. Um, and, uh, one of the reasons for that is that Patrick Henry is split today, right? So, um, with Ben Rifle, we may see that maybe start to tailor off a little bit, because, uh, John Harris, Harvey Dunn, uh, onto Ben Rifle, so there might be a sense that more of those will wanna stay as a cohort and go to Washington. So over time, that could lessen. We have a little strip, um, over between Kiwanis and Western, uh, which open enrolls to, some of those kids open enroll to Lincoln. I would say within that strip, it's 50/50, even though it's, so half those kids in that strip go to Lincoln, half go to Roosevelt, so. But those are things that, as we, um, have to manage school size, you know, will those options still be available? Hard to say. We'll see, we'll have to see how things materialize. Then we have, uh, kids from the honors program today at Edison rolling into Lincoln High School. So, today, um, because the honors program is at, at Edison, we, uh, allow them to essentially, uh, attend Lincoln if they want to, to keep, if they wanna stay as a cohort, and that's just been something we've done in the district for, for quite some time. Um, and, uh, it's not that they're going to, uh, even though there, it may be a perception that they're going to Lincoln to the accelerated or honors program, there is no honors or accelerated program at Lincoln. So this is just a convenience that we offer those families to say, uh, we're gonna let you choose to, uh, open enroll to Lincoln if you want to. Um, and there's about 30-ish per year, and half of them come from, you know, uh, I think half of them come from Roosevelt, half of them come from Washington, and then there's a good chunk that already go to Lincoln from that, from that honors program. Um, and then you have the Spanish Immersion Program. from that, from that honors program. And then you have the Spanish immersion program, which is at Edison. And that program, that is a program that's located at the high school. And so there's about 66 of those kids today because that cohort is growing. So they're working their way through school. Eventually, that will be, so eventually that will become about 400 kids. Because it's about, you know, if you, if you think about what's in each grade at the Spanish immersion, now it's up to about 100, over 100 kids. If they work their way all the way through high school, four grades, you're going to have 400 of those going to Lincoln. And so that's just something, so if you think about, over time, we may see the John Harris enrollment coming over lessen. We'll see the specialty program from Spanish immersion becoming greater. And so we'll still have a larger population of open enrollment going to, to Lincoln High School in this, the way, the way it exists today, having those programs located there. Grandfathering. Lots of opinions on grandfathering. So one, one way to look at it is that you can, if we just allow our seniors to, to essentially stay at the school that they're at. The way I would look at it is that the most impacted school by that would be Jefferson. Because if you assume that in this case, in, in the case of Jefferson, there's about 338 kids, 38 kids that would be zoned, seniors that would be zoned to go to Jefferson. If we let them stay at their home high school, you'll be starting Jefferson with about three, between 300 and 400 less kids. And so the downside of that is it's going to be harder to offer more programming at, at the, at the school when you, when you do that. But it's, it's certainly, I, I think something that, you know, we hear a lot of feedback, let seniors stay. If you did juniors, I didn't do juniors on here, but I can certainly prepare something for the app. It's going to be very similar. So you're going to have a cohort of 300 to 400 kids. So if you go back to what the enrollment for Jefferson was without, you know, without New Tech, thinking it's about 13, 400, 1400 kids, now I take 400 off of that, you know, you're down to 900, another 400, you're dealing with a very small school if you elect to do, to let juniors stay where they're at. But that gives you some perspective. Again, the most impacted school is going to be, going to be Jefferson. And then it's kind of dispersed amongst the other schools. Siblings. So then another discussion point would be siblings. If you let the seniors stay where they're at, what about their siblings as a convenience to parents? Because it allows siblings to stay at the same, so do you, so do you grandfather in siblings as well? Because, well, I have a senior and, you know, I have a sophomore. It'd be great if they could still attend the same school. So, so what we did here is we took the siblings of all that senior class. So you think about the senior class of, that would be seniors when the school's open, this is all, all their siblings. And so, and then by school, these would be, and then the way we've managed that in the past is, as Dr. Nold can attest to, is it becomes in perpetuity, or it could. Because eventually that, that junior will be a senior next year and then you have a sophomore and then it just keeps rolling, right? And so it becomes a much bigger open enrollment pipeline than you might, might think. Now you could say, okay, it's seniors stay where, where you are, you know, and then, you know, siblings can stay only for that one year, right? And then you have to go back to your attendance center. But, you know, if you do it in perpetuity, this is your pipeline of kids. So you have, again, the most impacted is if you look down the Jefferson line, those kids should go to Jefferson, they never will, or those families. It's almost like giving, I call it the golden ticket. You're giving that family a golden ticket to attend that high school. And so that's just, you know, pointing that out. So that's the, that's the part about siblings. And so that's sort of a decision that will have to be made is not only one open enrolling seniors or juniors or whatever, but are their siblings going to be grandfathered in? And then would it be for one year only? Or, you know, or would it be in perpetuity, as I call it? So that's a, that's a consideration. Eighth graders, you know, some discussion about whether you allow eighth graders, the incoming eighth, you know, the kids that are going to be eighth graders to stay at their middle school because they have ties to that school and whatever. And so the way I would think about this is simply, again, the most impacted school would be Ben Rifele. Because what essentially, if you let kids stay where they're at, that eighth grade class, which would be about 300 kids that would, should go to, to Ben Rifele by their boundaries, wouldn't. And so you would start off that middle school, if you thought about Ben Rifele today being 900, 300, 300, 300, it would start off with 600 kids. And so that's, that's kind of the impact to that. And then it would be, you know, the rest of them are kind of dispersed amongst it. But that's, that's the way I kind of look at it. So you'd start up a new middle school with that. Historically, we haven't done grandfathering at the middle school. I think when we opened Memorial, there wasn't any, any grandfathering. But it's certainly an, an option if you wanted to keep eighth graders, let them go to continue on or at least have that option. That would really be the impact. You'd, you'd be starting Ben Rifele with, with a much smaller number. So as we went on our journey and looked through, you know, took feedback and, and, you know, through Let's Talk, virtual sessions, other things, you know, we, we came across some what I call adjustments or maybe items to consider that, that, you know, might be things that we, we would consider or adjustments to the two options that we have. You know, one is that in op, in middle school option B, we were moving that cohort west of T.L.S. Road up to McGovern, certainly an item of consideration. There's only 85 of them, I think would be to let them stay at, at Memorial. And then down the road, once that area builds out west of T.L.S. Road, the Lenox Land, when it becomes a bigger cohort, then make another boundary change, you know, down the road. Because at, at that point, that cohort will get so big, it's going to have, have to eventually move to, to McGovern and Jefferson because there's just no way that Jeff, that Memorial and Roosevelt can hold that eventually. But they could probably hold, you know, they could probably for a little while longer attend that. So that was certainly a consideration that, that we looked at.
Doug, when you, when you say 85 students, is that, that's not 85 middle school students? Or it is?
Yeah, 85 middle school students, yep. So you'd be looking, you know, taking Memorial from 1100 to 1200 kids. It's, you know, that school's been added on to, it's built for a little more than that. So it would be, so you could certainly entertain that. When, when we were going through the process, I affectionately call this, or my team, the Rosa Parks nub. So when we did the middle school boundary, Rosa Parks is, is an odd thing right now because it has the, that eastern part on, on the green. And then it has another part, the old Horace Mann area that moves to, to Rosa Parks. But anyway, there's this, there's this current area that's to the north, that is part of Rosa Parks. And when we originally drew our Ben Rifele boundary, we just brought it straight across that street there. And then we, we had that nub going to Whittier. Well, it's such a small, it just makes sense to keep that cohort together and then make the Ben Rifele area to go up and get that little nub. Eventually, that area might be looked at to put into Annie Sullivan. But, you know, at this point, it's just, I think, might, might make sense to consider just leaving that into Ben Rifele to try to keep as much of Rosa together as There was also a small area, if, if option B was chosen, remember this is the area that takes the Oscar Howe bus area and moves it up to McGovern. When we drew this boundary, we missed a small bus area that was part of that. So that's a technical adjustment that we would probably include in that area that would go to, go up to McGovern. It's not a, it's very minimal students, but when, but would, would keep that, that busing area together. Otherwise, you'd have to come in there with a bus and, and bus that up to when the kids right across the street are going up. So it's more or less of a technical So high school, start with, I guess they both say A, but two areas here might consider. If you were going to keep, if, if the open enrollment at Lincoln was going to continue, and, and one, one thing that we did when we right-sized all of the schools to, is we moved the Whittier area from Washington to Lincoln. And there's, you know, there's about 500 kids in there. And so, you know, one thought, one thought is that you could move that back to Washington. And, and then free up a little more room at Lincoln to take on what we know will be a growing Spanish immersion program and still allow from that southern part of Washington to open enroll over to Lincoln. So that's one item that we as a team looked at. So it's kind of a pivot area that could go between the two areas. It does go to Washington today. And Washington, you know, at least at this point is, still takes open enrollment. So, you know, we'll, we won't know for a couple years what kind of the open enrollment patterns take on across the district. So that's one item that certainly could be considered if you were worried about Lincoln getting too big. I would tell you that Lincoln today is on the freshman and sophomore cohort that are attending Lincoln today are 600. So it's on a run rate to get to 2,400. Just because, you know, we, to try to alleviate Roosevelt, we've had to move it across, right? But, but essentially, those two cohorts are on a run rate of 2,400 and we have to manage our way through that or Lincoln's just going to be bigger. The other area I would say is down in that, that, that area, that's south of 229, is that we heard, you know, most of those kids open enroll today to Lincoln. If you think about it, all they do is they go south to, to 229, they get out of New York State, get off at Lincoln. It would be a convenience and it's not a huge number of kids, 44 students. But I think it makes sense to keep that into the Lincoln area. So that's another item that, of consideration that we heard through, through feedback. This is just a enrollment chart, tried to give you a picture of growth. So you remember, we, we kind of know what, at least the kids in our school today are going to be our high schoolers in years to come. And so all we did here was we took all of the kids and we, we put them into the home attendance center and to, you know, to just, and I, I did this just for option C, just, just from an optics standpoint to try to give you, we actually did it in quadrant. So you can see today, by quadrant, where the kids are. And then at the fall of 2021, how those, what the population would, would look like. And you can see it's pretty much growth across the board, really. But it would allow you to kind of see over time what those high schools would start to look like from a pure, you know, based on where kids lived and where they should attend. And then, again, you have to take kind of the open enrollment and, and layer that over. The other thing I would say is that over time, we're using, when we look at this, we're kind of looking at like a third, fourth grade class, you know, any class we know over time will trite just because we know, think about like from a graduation rate. We know we graduate, you know, ultimately on a completer rate, maybe 88%. So we know 12% of kids drop out of school over time. We have kids at auxiliary sites like Joe Foss. And so probably 7% of ki, and then we have kids that go out to CTE, right? So these are bodies that would go to that school, you know. So alls I'm saying is the, the kids that end up at those schools at the end of the day might be a little bit less. So across the board. But that, that gives you a, a sense of, we still have 1,000 kids to grow over the cohorts that are in school today versus what are in there now to go to our high schools. So that's why we built the new high school because we know over time, we're going to see, see those At an elementary school level, something, again, Rosa Parks is, is kind of a differ, when we, when we took Horace Mann offline and put bridges there, we, that old Horace Mann area, which is that middle green area, that's part of Rosa Parks. And they get bused over to Rosa Parks. And so we have been dialoguing with those parents to say, hey, would you want to attend Susan B. Anthony if possible, right? And we've had some that do, some that don't. And, and if we provided busing, would you, would you? But I think it probably makes sense, at least that, to look as we roll out boundaries for, with this is, makes sense probably to make that area part of Susan B. Anthony. And, because it's just more contiguous to that school instead of busing them all the way across Rosa Parks. And so that's an area, really isn't going to affect middle school and high school, but it's an area that came to mind as we were working through boundaries that probably should be, should be looked at.
How many kids is that? How many kids?
Well, how many kids? I'm thinking it's 90, yeah. 80, 90, yeah. Yeah. So we've been, we've been kind of doing a survey with those parents, contacting them, letting them know we're looking at this area. Specialty programming, you know, we have two large specialty programs in our middle school. And so, you know, when we did the options, we planned for those. And so how we, how we planned for that is we had to look at the cohorts that aren't even in middle school yet, right? And so we, the way we did that is we looked at the third, fourth and fifth graders at the Challenge Center. So we know what that cohort is, right? So, and then we have to gross that up by a factor. And because we know that there are kids in the honors program at Edison that didn't come out of the Challenge Center. They could be kids at other schools that are gifted, that take advantage of the honors program at middle school. And it's about, about a factor of 1.67. So that's a way we kind of have to predict that, that cohort. And then, and then Spanish immersion, it's a little bit easier because we know the kids that go to Sonia Sotomayor. And so you can look at those cohorts and know what that population is going to be. And so it's easier for us to predict and say, well, that cohort's going to be 320 kids that we have to plan for at those middle school programs. So when we did the boundaries for, you know, when we were looking at what school to locate them at, we, we had a, we had to predict what the size of those programs were going to be. And so that gives you some context of the size of those programs at a, at a middle school level. And that, the trick becomes as, as it's grown, between them, they're approaching 600 kids. And so if you put them at one school, you almost, you're getting close to almost taking a middle school offline. And kids that are geographically close to those schools, you know, you're pushing them to other schools. So that's why in option A, we had them going to different schools. And so, so that was, that's what the cohorts look like at middle school. And then there was some discussion we went through about, you know, and we had people tell us, well, we want And then there was some discussion we went through about, you know, and we had people tell us, well, we want, we don't want them separate because our Spanish immersion program kids take advantage of the honors program. And there's a hand, there's some kids that cross over, except we've worked through that. And, you know, we believe that we can offer that, those enrichment classes at each, at those, at Patrick Henry as well, right? So that those kids aren't missing out on any of those opportunities, if that's what it came down to. So what, what happens next? We have the work session today. We have a, a June 8 meeting. So I would say that any follow-ups that come out of there from you guys today or after you go off and think about this overload of information, we can bring questions and back to the, the June 8 meeting to try to get you guys follow-up questions or things that you want to see, right? And then we have the meeting on June 22nd where I think it's hoped that we'll adopt boundaries. And then July through December, once we have line of sight on the boundaries, we have to start educating people. Not only boundaries, but then we move into grandfathering, open enrollment. Because, you know, we're going to have to quickly decide things like if we offer the ability for seniors to stay at the school they're at, do you want to stay or do you want to go to the new school, right? And then start to work down those types of things so we can, for Mr. Conrad, let him know what his, what his enrollment's going to be at the new high school and the other schools, right? As we work through those. And so a lot, you know, and then all of the systems that we have to update and put into busing systems, figure out the busing routes. So, you know, once the, the adoption is made, then we have a lot of another, I call it the, another year of work to implement it, right? So realistically, to get ready for that August of 2021, when the new schools open. Now, we, I, I like to, I like to hope that we've been very transparent with this process. There's a ton of data on the website. Every meeting's been recorded, every workbook of excruciating detail that you want to see out there is out there. But we've been, we've been, and, and we've just had a lot of correspondence where people have, either through the task force or just emails or whatever, had said, what about this, right? What if we move this to there? And we, we dialogue with them and say, or how many kids are in this pocket? Or how many kids? And we've been pretty responsive in getting to their needs. I would say that most of them, the other ones haven't, they're just anecdotal questions answered. Very little, you know, only one where somebody's gone to a lot of work to present another option. And so in full transparency, there's never been an option that we haven't been open to looking at and dimensioning. Because who's to say that we have the right option? It's only through taking them, feed, community feedback, lots of dialogue, lots of people looking at, that we hope to work, look at the final option. So Megan Stever, I think is her name, I think I've seen it as Van Gogh sometimes, and I don't want to insult anyone. But she had, she had sent us a presentation, a very well-done presentation of a boundary option. And then that, that came then was recently adopted by a lot of people on Facebook as, as an option. And so I thought out of fairness, I would present her option to you or her slides of what she was, what she was doing. So this is her PowerPoint essentially. So she's looked at the new boundary options and she has done a lot of investigation. And she thinks that some small revisions to high school option C, combined with middle school option A, as it is, are, are, is the way to go, right? And so determine a new, taking in all the factors that are out there. So she's done some intricate mapping here. This is her work product, very professionally done. And so when she looked at high school option A, she's basically pointing out some, some things that, that in her opinion, with safe routes to school and whatnot, doesn't accommodate, right? So, and so, you know, that's really kind of where she started. And, and as we kind of move through this, we'll kind of see where she arrived at. But, you know, she's basically looking at that discovery area saying, they should go down to Memorial or Roosevelt because it's closer, safer, all that type, those types of things. And then high school option C, she is saying, you know, it, it splits, you know, it splits Discovery, Oscar-How, Memorial. It's splitting up some neighborhoods, it's eliminating some walking routes, and putting inexperienced teen drivers into the ages corridor, right? So, so she outlined that for us. And then she came up with a revision she sent to us. And I'll go to another, another slide, it's a little clearer. And this was sort of earlier on and she came up with this option. And, and she had asked for a number of students in these things. And we've always been respectful in corresponding with her. It's easier to see, so she wanted to bring option one, she wanted to bring that discovery area into Roosevelt and then move all of the, I call the Hayward area up to Jefferson. And then she wanted to swap out part of that Roosevelt area over into Lincoln, which is a lot of the country club area, there's not a lot of kids in there. Easier to see on this option. So, so it was birthed into an option on Facebook that was called our option, I think is what it's called. And you'll see, you know, you see some correspondence in it. So this is a little easier to visually see. So in her option, you can see that north-south strip, the, the 295 and the 217 is the old 712, right? So she's just bifurcated that into an area that should stay in Roosevelt. And then the 217 would go to Jefferson. And then that green 222 area would go up to Jefferson instead of Roosevelt. So that's an option that she has developed. And, and so being respectful, it's, it's, it's an option. And then she has that 44, that southern, south of 229 area going into, to Lincoln as well. So, and, and an item for consideration at this point, right? Like I said, don't want to bring you, rule anything out that's, that's, you know, gone to this much work. Want to, you just wanted you guys to see it, right? And so certainly there's been some, some people that have come through Let's Talk that say endorse, we want you to endorse our option. I can say fairness, we've had other people that say, we want to go to the new high school. So it's a mixed bag at this point.
With this option, does, I mean, did she take into account open enrollment numbers and the specialty programs that, for example, feed into Lincoln?
Yeah, I would, I would say it would be, you'd end up in a very similar spot. I think she, you know, I would, I would say more, you know, it's, it's. What I would say is if you started to look at like the 220, the two, the 222 people, bringing them up to Jefferson, they're farther from Jefferson than the people that are in the 495, right? And in fact, we did some, we did some, looked at that area. And if you looked at the strip, I'm going to go back to looking at that strip in its entirety. Think of that 495 and the 217, which in our option C, we have going to, to Thomas Jefferson. The average distance for that is they are 1.6 miles from Roosevelt, 2.1 miles from Jefferson. So they, so on an average, they're half a mile further, but they're also the closest to Jefferson. And I go back to the scenarios that we have on the east side where families are closer to Lincoln than they are to Washington, right? It's optically, we have those situations in our district, so. And then, and then middle school option B, she's endorsing, so. Or no, she says middle school option B cuts off neighborhoods and bifurcates Oscar-How and whatnot. And so she's a proponent of middle school option A. So that's what she sent us. And so that's kind of.
Can you go back to the high school one? I'm just looking at our numbers.
And are any demographic numbers done on our option?
Well, yeah, you, what you would certainly be doing is you would be, you know, the 217 moving up to, you know, to Jefferson is the Hayward area. So you certainly have a higher degree of, of kids that are on, if the best measure of socioeconomic we're using is free and reduced lunch, you have a, almost 100% of those kids that are on free or reduced lunch. And of course, the 495, much less so, right? And then the, the 222 is probably a mixed bag. Because most of the 222 is going to be closer to the, the eastern part of that quadrant. Because on the western part is the country club. And that whole green space, there's not many kids in there. So most of those kids are closer to where the, you know, it's, it's most of the kids between Kiwanis and Western. And so probably a mix of, of kids, you know, demographically or whatever. So, so I would say, yes, Jefferson would look much more, you know, it would be, their diversity would be much higher than what would be representative of, of probably our other, other schools.
Furthermore, I don't think she took into account, although she was very thorough on her streets, Roosevelt and Lincoln High School basically are located on 41st Avenue, or 41st Street. So there's really no way of ever avoiding 41st Street and the visiting intersections to get to those schools. So, yeah, we take location, we can't change right now of those two schools. So we're going to have those teen issues. If, if you've ever been in any of those high school parking lots, beginning or dismissal of school, it is a nightmare. And I'm not disagreeing with that. And we are concerned about that. But that's why we're a part of the PATH task, or PATH Committee with the city and so forth, to continue to work on our safe routes to our schools.
Right. I mean, I'm just looking at our numbers, and I'm not discrediting, discrediting this now for discussion. We can still talk about it. But, I mean, you've got Washington and Roosevelt still at 2,000 and above students. So, you know, that's.
And the, the other option, you know, the thing too about the 712, I call the strip is, you know, Roosevelt and, and option C, I think, is a little smaller. So you have room for open enrollment, right? I mean, you, you still have some room for open enrollment between schools, which I think is important, right? If you, you know, other than Lincoln, which is a little tight. But, you know, it's hard to know what those, those enrollment patterns are going to be because you're changing the mix of middle school and then so will that change the cohort? So I think as, as Deana Barr said on the task force, is one of the important things is that this isn't the last time we're going to do boundaries, right? We'll, we'll know more in, you know, three years, four years, five years about how things have started to, you know, amongst the community, how enrollment patterns will be. We don't know how many kids are going to want to open enrollment to open enroll to new Jefferson, right? Because, you know, because it's a new school and there's something exciting about that. Or, you know, how kids like to go to different, it's, it's not that the offering is, is less at any other high school, it's just different, right? And so we know that there's those things that attract kids. And so we'll have to see over time what the enrollment patterns are going to do and then we can adjust, right? So I was, that's what I was saying about that Whittier area. It can, it can be here today, but in, in few years or five years, it can go here tomorrow, right? I mean, so I, I think it was a, a key point that she made is that probably preparing our community that this isn't going to be the last time, right? So, but we hear that a lot. I bought my home, I think I'm going to go here. And we try to be, we try to hold them for five years, but, you know, we're a dynamic community. We still have a ton of growth on the northwest side, some on the southeast side. We've got the Lenox Land. And so it's, it's going to change again over time and look different five years from now than it does, does today. So we, we just try to do a good job of, based on the kids that are in school today, which is, which is good. Because we already know what our pipeline is to high school, right? Our kindergartners are, we know what that's going to look like down the road. And, you know, it's, it's, so it's easy to track that cohort. And then kind of being able to predict new growth, like the Lenox Land could be 1,000 kids, 100, 100 kids per grade, right? So that's 400 more high schoolers, 300 more middle schoolers. So that's why I was talking about the Cherry Lake area. You could do something with that different today than you did five years from now. It's just being transparent that, that, that area may eventually have to move, right? So.
Are you complete with your report? Because I know we have, we have a hard stop at four because we have our Southeast Tech Board meetings. So if you're not finished, but I know we have more questions we want to ask too, so.
I just had a question on how many members do they have on the Facebook site, our option? And was Megan selected as a spokesperson for this group? How many people are on that? The members that are.
I think she has a, she has a group. I don't, I'm not a Facebook guy. I tend to see them, I see them when they come through Let's Talk, you know.
500 people?
How many, how many through, through like Let's Talk have I gotten that said, elect our option? I'm going to say a dozen.
Thank you.
And I've had some that have come through that said, I know you, I know you have this, our option, but I want, we want to go to the new high school. So it's, so I wouldn't say it's like, it's like, I, I have to be fair and say, I, I think it's about a dozen, right? So.
So it's not consensus on the group?
Yeah.
Right.
And so.
And I'm a member of the group, just because I followed it. That doesn't mean I'm supporter. I mean, just because you're a member of a group doesn't mean.
Yeah, you, you see a lot of, you know, I mean, early on in the task force meeting when we had a, you know, we had an option that was going to move Pettigrew up to McGovern. They mobilized very quickly and we had a lot of feedback from them, right? And so you see it sort of, it comes and goes according to what, what people perceive might have been, what was talked about at the last task force meeting, let's, you know, and so, and that's great. We want people to be engaged and we want them to understanding. And people have been very respectful. So about a dozen then, realistically. But she's, I, I have to compliment her on her work and the seriousness that she's gone about it. And, and, you know, when we hear safe routes to school and things of that, our ears perk up. Because, you know, we have the PATH Committee, we work with the city. We know it's going to be a new high school. And just like McGovern was, and we're going to have to work hard to, you know, to make safe routes to school. To get tripper buses in, to get city buses in there if needed. And so, you know, all those things are fundamental to what we do as a district. Safety is first and foremost to, to our kiddos and parents, so.
So will, will we see any recommendations from the committee? I mean, that's what we tasked the committee to do, is to present us with recommendations. Are, are these options their recommendations?
Yeah, I, I don't want to speak for the task force. I think, I, I think the task force was respectful to not get, to not box you into a recommendation that you didn't go with and put you in that position. So I think they've given us feedback on each one. I think if you look at all the things considered, I think middle school option A is probably the one that looks at the most things that we're trying to accomplish as a district, right? Because it. a district, right? Because it alleviates some of the, the crowding of, on the west side. It's keeping a cohort of JFK together. It's moving it to Edison. I get, that's hard. They were, were once part of Edison. It allows us to split our two big specialty programs, right? And it allows us to backfill at Patrick for what John Harris and Harvey Dunn, that was, that was moved over to Ben Rife. So I think when I look at all of those things that considered, I think though, that's, that's a, a, a good option. I think at high school, I think middle school option C, you know, obviously it's hard to draw the line at north-south between Jefferson and Roosevelt. But I think, I think option C gives a natural border of 26th Street, T Ellis Road. And it, it creates the, tries to, more enables our high schools to look alike than any other, any other option. And, and, but, you know, that's, so without a recommendation, I'm just saying that those are probably the options that accomplish the most. And we're, we're trying to balance the, the enrollment.
Was option B ever explored with then also splitting honors from Edison in middle school?
Was option B?
Using option B, but then also taking honors out of Edison and putting it at Patrick? And what would that do?
Oh, yeah, you, yeah, I'm trying to think if we looked at option B, at that point, we would have to, I think you to, you, you'd end up with a large hole in Patrick that you would have to fill with something. Is that what you're, or you're talking about?
I said move them to, so option B right now doesn't have honors going to Patrick, correct?
Right.
What if you used option B, there might be a hole at Edison, but I think that's going to be quickly backfilled with more Spanish immersion.
I think we did.
Enrollment.
We looked at it. I think you, you would have to, you know, we would have to move part of Patrick out, right? Because otherwise it would be overcrowded. And, and probably the logical place for stuff to move out of Patrick would be up to McGovern, probably in that sense. But certainly something, you know, any option could be, you know, looked at.
And, and the only reason I think of that is because, I mean, I know we're going to be at a point, those programs, as well as they work together, they're taking over in middle school. And so, you know, we, when the bond task force came together, they had a number of how many students they wanted in a building. And I think we need to keep that at the top of our mind when we're looking at enrollments at these buildings. And I just, I'm, I'm wondering if we could maybe see some numbers on that, just as another option, not to confuse things, but as we're talking through this, because I believe there's room at Patrick to even add on a little bit there left. I don't think there is at Edison. So if we move that honors using option B, in the meantime, there might be a little room in Ben Rife, and then all of it could maybe come together. But just a thought, I'm not trying to confuse issues further, but that just.
We can, we can certainly bring that Monday night forward.
What if transportation, I know the thing that we hear over and over, I think in the Let's Talk and the community input was transportation. How am I going to get to my kids to school if one's at, you know, if the seniors at one school, the sophomores at another school, same with middle schooler, now I'm going three miles instead of one mile. That's a burden on me. Is there a way to look at, I, I, thank you, by the way, I did ask Doug, and I think I got to all of you, the average distances for current families, and then with the new proposals, what those would be. And basically, most improve as an average. We know some people are going to go higher in their distance and some are going to go lower. But as an average as a district, they've improved through both these options. Is there a way, I'm wondering, once we do come to a decision as a board, we could examine for a short gap period, because it's only going to be about a two-year lapse where students might not get that if we don't allow sibling tag along in that high school year, a special transportation option, whether fee or non-fee depending to do, to kind of just get that gap filled. Is that something we could explore, do you think, as a board too? It's just something I'm thinking of too, so that when we're going forward, we can try to think of some solutions to families to do this. Did you have something?
No.
Yeah. Yeah, I know budget's an issue and obviously, and so forth, but it'd be great just to maybe, if we could come up with options to help our families and so forth with that change. You know, the easiest, I had to carpool with my son. I know, I remember doing that when we started high school because of the lack of parking at Lincoln for under, underclassmen and so forth. So if they don't have those options, we need to be considerate of those and make sure we're making this the least disruptive, even though it is disruptive to them, we can be.
Doug, can you remind, I know you gave us the number, but do, what, how many parking spots does Jefferson have? Because I know that was a point of contention for some people.
Yeah, it has over 1,000, I know. So it would be the most of.
All of them, I think.
It'd be the most of any of the high schools, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think.
1,047. It looked like in Lincoln has 729.
There's also that terrible.
Overflow.
Aren't you?
Yeah.
Sure. So for those people who are concerned about, you know, not having a neighborhood to park in because there isn't a neighborhood around Jefferson currently, or, you know, commercial areas or whatever, that really shouldn't be a concern.
Yeah.
Because we will have.
Jefferson has, Jefferson's going to have 1,047. And today, Lincoln and Washington have about 920. Lincoln has 729. And CTE has 380. So like Jefferson, a lot of unutilized parking spots there.
They could almost have like their own parking spot.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. So lots be more parking than we've had at any of our other schools.
I think too, that one thing we haven't really talked about is hopefully the positive impact on the CTE kids as well. Right now, I hear from, you know, you hear from some people one way, and you hear, just like anything, you hear the opposite. But there are some kids who are very interested in CTE, but they, they don't want to miss out on those traditional aspects of high school, whether it's playing a sport or being in a larger band or orchestra or whatever it is. And so there may be a larger draw for CTE at Jefferson, just because it has those traditional aspects that right now, maybe they don't get as the full experience that they would have. And so ideally, our goal would be that we have 400 students in CTE, right?
New Tech.
Or New Tech.
I was going to correct you, but I was waiting.
New Tech, yeah.
In New Tech. And so, you know, that's 400 students there, that right now, we're, I don't remember what we're at, we're under three, or me?
300.
300.
You know, so I mean, that's another chunk of kids who hopefully can take advantage of that programming, but also get the benefit of having the extracurriculars that maybe they don't, they do, can, they can still access, but this would be obviously a much more convenient. And that's a great program. So we want it to grow and we want students to take advantage of it. So I think that will be a plus. You might find more students that are willing to open enroll to that program itself and fill up some of those seats too.
I agree.
What we're hoping.
On page nine, plus we're talking about New Tech and Jefferson, in terms of the head count, go to page nine, both option.
Would you put your mic by you? I don't think people, if there are people watching, we can hear you. Thanks, sorry.
If you want to hear me, that's, that's a compliment. Okay. If we look at, on page, if we go to page nine and look at New Tech and Jefferson, the head count, when you look at the total 1,452, have you already taken into consideration 301? Or does that need to be factored in so that we're looking at?
For Jefferson?
Yeah.
That's separate. So you, you have to combine them two to get the Jefferson.
To get the 1700.
Okay. So that's, I think that's something that we all need to be aware of.
Yeah.
And I know people are worried about it being a new school and maybe not as many upperclassmen, say, depending on where we draw the line for grandfathering. But I think it's important to back to note, as a state, it'd still be what, the sixth largest high school, probably in our state, you know? So it'll be larger than Brandon Valley and larger than Hirschburg. So even though it's newer, soon it will catch up to the remaining schools in our district, and it's still larger than everything else basically in the state, except for Rapid City.
Yep.
I think one of the things I noticed too, also on page nine, if anyone wants to follow along, I mean, it really concerns me with the options with Lincoln, just because, because of the open enrollment numbers. I mean, it looks to me like we're almost going to have to eliminate open enrollment at Lincoln if we proceed with these options. Maybe if there's 500.
Outside of programming, open enrollment.
Right, right.
And, and that is a concern. And, you know, that's something we've discussed, that maybe, once we get this checked off, we as a district probably need to have a long-term plan in place for our Spanish and honors to see, do we add second sites at the middle and high school to accommodate those for both a location standpoint for all of our community members, so that there's more than, I mean, center is nice because it's middle, but maybe we start adding those if the population and the people who want to use the program keep growing, especially with the dual enrollment being such a new factor in our district. Or dual immersion, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I, I agree completely. I mean, you can't, you know, I think after, you know, my son's class, they get into four and five sections at the elementary level. So as we see those kids rise up, we're going to have to split the program somehow, in my opinion.
Hope the numbers keep going. It's, it's just going to happen.
Right, exactly. I mean, it's easy to do when you've got, Carly, how many kids are in your daughter's class, your oldest one?
Yes.
25.
25. So, yeah. Get, and then you would get to 125 in class. It's any significant.
So middle school A, the special schools go where?
In middle school A?
Yeah.
Spanish immersion at Edison.
Edison.
Honors at Patrick.
Yep.
And we can guarantee that we can do honors programming at, at Edison. I mean, they can take the, the two classes that they have the option to take.
And if we split them, you're.
Right, if we split them.
Basically, it's the two that would not be offered if they did split, if we didn't do anything, would be the geometry and biology. Is that correct, at eighth grade level?
Well, geometry, right now, every middle school is like that, except it's supposed to.
I thought that was algebra. Geometry is now too. Okay, thank you.
I mean, some of them travel.
Right.
This depends on the numbers, you have the numbers, the obstacles, and then biology, and then science, and then we are doing the analysis.
Great. So that would eliminate that problem if they are split.
And they can always, one or two will know.
And as I say, I had a son who, that wasn't offered, we had no honors program at the time. And I remember we went to Lincoln before school started because of the time difference between middle school and high school. And, and he could take a class there, so there's options.
I think the only thing I want to differentiate is, so we have honors, and we also have accelerated. And every single middle school offers accelerated math and accelerated English. And so in my experience, my kids have never taken, taken honors English, but they have both taken accelerated. And so I don't know, I, there's probably, I think we had a brief conversation, there's maybe a little bit more depth to some of the honors stuff than accelerated. But they're both, I mean, set up to be challenging. And so even if it's not called honors ELA, there's still an accelerated option.
If it's quality or honors is quality, like, it's a problem that's as well, that would happen.
And, and I think an important distinction, it would be, algebra, geometry, and biology are all high school credit, that accelerated and honors English is not too. So they wouldn't be hindering their high school, well, or, and/or their, you know, pathway by not having that as well, so.
Yeah. And I think, you know, one of the benefits that I've seen when, of having them together is that when my older daughter was there, they had so many Spanish immersion that some, they pulled some of them just to balance out class numbers because maybe they have less honors students. And so they picked people who, you know, they knew could perform in the classes. And so I think that's a benefit. But I, as I'm looking at some of the numbers that, you know, we asked for and we talked about, and I just don't think that there's a compelling enough reason or a higher, a high enough number of students that we, that we have to say honors and Spanish immersion have to be married together because we have options for the Spanish immersion kids to take. We have busing ways that we can make arrangements so that students can still utilize the fee-based busing in an efficient manner. And for the handful of the students who are, you know, testing into those higher classes, we can make arrangements for them to still have access to those classes. So they're not missing out, to Cynthia's point, they're not, you know, slowing their progress through a math class or a science class that they would have been, not have been able to take. So for me, you know, I, I do think there's a synergy, and I think there's great things. But I think that you can also offer those things. And maybe having honors at Patrick brings a new synergy or a new environment or, or, you know, changes the, not that Patrick needs to change, but that it, it just brings a new freshness to have a new program in their building. And when I look at like driving routes and things like that, I, I look at JFK. And to me, being able to keep that entire elementary school together, that JFK group, and get them to Edison, I grew up, I went to Oscar Howe, and I got bused to Edison every day. And I feel like I turned out okay, you know? And so I don't think that it's that far of a distance. And when I'm looking at the map, and obviously it's just a map, but I feel like busing the kids from Oscar Howe to McGovern seems like a bigger stretch to me than it does to have them go from JFK to Edison.
Yeah, the average, we, I looked at that before we came in. For JFK, today, they're, they're on the bus, the average distance to Memorial is 2.1 miles. The, the average distance to Edison is 2.8.
Yeah.
So it's less than a mile difference. And minimizing it, it's just that's, that's the difference.
As an average. And that, and that's what we need to do as a board, is we need to look at the average because we have 24,000 students, not one.
Yeah. Yeah. So I guess for me, when I look at middle school, option A seems to be, have more of the characteristics that I think meet what our goals were that we set out for, to try to impact the highest number of students with the decisions that we make. So I was going to look and see if there's. I don't think any of your recommendations or things to consider were, so if we, do we want to look at page 15 and talk to?
Well, I guess, I might wait almost till we, I, I think people need to digest that. And we only have a few more minutes. So I, I mean, we should get to those. But I think before we get to those, we almost have to look at if we're doing A or B.
Sure.
Before we get, you know, does that make sense? Because some of those are only pertinent to if we're doing those. So to keep the process clean and to not have discussions that don't maybe need to happen, maybe we should just start having discussions about, start today our middle school between A and B, since that was first in the presentation. If everybody's open to that? Okay. Questions or comments about between A and B? I, I just would, I see benefits of both. I agree about the splitting on A, and that's the only reason I, I would like to see those numbers as well for splitting in B, just to also then make that comparison. So I'm, I think I'm waiting to see that before I make a final determination which one I like. There's a couple reasons being on that. I feel like we, we, we need to make sure to keep Memorial at a certain size. And I worry if we just do a short-term plan of like Cherry Lake and that western side, west of T Ellis Road, going to Memorial, in two or three years, we change them again. And so, you know, that's a concern of mine, especially with that Lenox piece in the mix. And I would like to see our boundaries be in use more than two or three years, because this is a huge exercise. I mean, they'd only be in existence for, just double the amount of time we spent on, you know, deciding them. And so that, that's one reason why I'm looking at that. That doesn't mean I'm not opposed to A. I just, that's something, I need to see those numbers to decide. And I apologize, I'm just asking for them today. But that, so that is my fault. Other discussions, sorry.
I like A. It eliminates the crowding on the west side. And I think it's healthy that we get the specialties split up. And it encourages some difference.
Diversity.
Yeah. So I'm, I'm really, I really like option A. Yeah. So I'm really, I really like option A.
An observation that I'd like to share and for us to maybe have some sensitivity towards is the building capacity. We had set those marks to be eighteen hundred at the high school, nine hundred at the middle school with a student-to-teacher ratio of one to, I think it was twenty-four point three. So if we could just keep that into the front of our minds as we look over, you know, page seven, that will give you those, the current enrollment. And then what those projections look like, as well as on page nine, those will give you those two options. But if we could look at those with a lens on the building capacity of eighteen hundred high school, nine hundred middle school, and the student-to-teacher ratio.
Yeah. And that's why I figured if those honors move out of Edison, that would lower that population a bit, which, you know, right now it's ten eighty-eight in option A and it's eleven forty-four in option B. We did B, but moved the honors over to Patrick.
Did you find agree, or just is somebody going to provide us with those updated numbers?
Doug. Will you be able to do that for us?
That option, yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
I can bring it Monday night, yeah.
One minute. Okay, thank you.
Moving the honors program in A to Patrick, right? That's what we're, some derivative of that.
And if we could also see.
Well, B, I guess B.
B. And if we could also.
Yes, B moving.
A moves, A moves honors.
A already has the split, B, I'm saying, could we see those numbers with a split? Yeah, gotcha. Yeah, like a B two. And if we could see both the numbers of students as well as the demographic.
Yep.
Any other discussions on A and B?
So you're looking for numbers if the, on B there.
Exactly. If we also split honors, yeah.
Well, and it just happens specialty school.
And for procedural purposes, as a board, I guess I was expecting we'd have our final vote on the twenty-second. Would you like to take a tentative vote on the A? So I'd take a motion on that. And then we could just go through each option and these additional considerations at that time and just have a tentative vote and still allow public feedback and then have the final vote. On, you know, we call it, called it a first reading, but then at least we can all be receiving the input. Or would you rather, do you still need more time to consider? I'd take a motion on what people would like to do.
I think if we get some information before the end of the week, so we can digest it over the weekend. Just if we have questions that come up like, and some different scenarios like you pointed out. So I would move to have a tentative first reading on Monday.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. First, second, all those in favor of tentative first reading on June eighth and final on June twenty-second signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Call the same sign. Thank you. Okay. On the high school, between A and C discussion. Or, yeah, A and C, all these letters.
Well, have we gone through all the extra options on page fifteen?
No, and I thought we'd wait and see what people end up on because some are very specific
Yep.
to if we do A or B. So, I mean, we can, how about we, since we're running out of time, we go to A and C. And if we have enough time left over, we'll go back to the, to the outliers.
I'll just say it right out.
For high school?
Yeah.
Yeah. I might maybe just cross that one off. I would concur with Todd.
I would say I'd like to use a lens of sensitivity towards what we have as the building capacities that we brought forth. And that would be eighteen hundred at the high school level and nine hundred at the middle school level. And the same student-teacher ratio. So that eighteen hundred.
I couldn't hear what you said.
So would you, do you have an option then different than, well, because Washington would be the outlier that's over that eighteen hundred lenses?
Yeah, so we should maybe.
I'm asking, do you have one?
I don't have a solution. What I would say in terms of my observation is that we had a building capacity at eighteen hundred. And so if you look at Washington, it is an outlier right now for option, both option A and option C. Option A for Roosevelt is an outlier for option A. C would fit that criteria. If we look at Lincoln, I mean, we're getting close. And if we add in that New Tech, because ultimately that New Tech and Jefferson are one, under option C, eighteen seventeen would be the total headcount. So again, that, if we're looking at the building capacity being eighteen hundred.
I wonder if you do the math, there's no way to get to eighteen hundred on all of them.
Right, yeah.
Is what I'm trying to say is if we have more students than eighteen hundred in each building. So that's where we're running into, if you add all those numbers across.
The only thing I would say about the eighteen hundred is that, I was saying before about these, eighteen hundred is sort of, they're, even with, if you said an adjective of eighteen hundred in a building, what we have to remember is that the capacity is probably from a headcount perspective more than that because of the things like the auxiliary sites, the Joe Foss, the C T Academy is, not all of those people are in a building at one time. So when we talk eighteen hundred, we're talking about kids physically in the building at that time. So it may be when you see like Washington High School at two thousand, it, you know, it may seem like, oh, we're over the ideal number, but it probably, it really isn't. We're still taking open enrollment at Washington. So that's something I would say there. There's probably a, you know, a factor between headcount and what call F T E or whatever, just because kids that are out of the building, attending part of their day at C T E, they're at Joe Foss, they're not actually in that building. So that's just, you know, so then you try to say, then, then at least you're trying to, from a head, from a headcount perspective, trying to get the schools fairly equal, except where you know you're going to have growth, right? So that's anodally what I'd say about if you're struggling with the eighteen hundred number.
Well, and what I'm trying to say is we have more than eighteen hundred times four.
Yes.
Numbers. So it's, we're not going to be under eighteen hundred in every building.
Eighteen thirty-seven.
Yeah, it would be the average. So, so that's why there's going to be a little fluctuation too.
And in some of those neighborhoods like a Washington where they're, I mean, aside from that bottom southeast corner, where there are maybe a few more houses that are going to be built, there really isn't going to be a lot of new growth, you know, unless
Brandon Valley.
People move in, you know, and have more kids than the last people who lived there. There's really not going to be a lot of growth in that. Whereas to your point, Jefferson, you're going to see a lot of that growth. And you're going to see in that Lenox area, you're going to see a lot of that growth in that area. And so it's okay to me that Washington is higher than that because that's probably where they're going to hover for a while. Also, taking into consideration, you looking at the, you know, people are, like you said, we don't know what the trends are going to be for open enrollment in and out. And will that change? And so it might look high now, but are people going to switch to something different? You know, are we going to see more New Tech people? Are we going to see more, you know, who knows?
We might have a lot more Northwest, Minnehaha County residents who start to open enroll to our district who have not been because of the location of a high school too. So if we, there's a lot of unknowns.
Yeah.
I think what, yeah, I was, what I would like to see maybe for Monday is what Lincoln would look like with these changes. I think that would make, maybe make me more comfortable with the open enrollment.
These ones right here, that change, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah. I agree.
I just, that's with option C, that's the only thing that concerns me is just those open enrollment numbers and just knowing that we would probably ultimately have to limit those.
That's why we were kind of, that's, that's kind of why we put on for consideration is there, that, that wittier, that area right there, those five hundred students are already at Washington. And it'll alleviate some of the, you know, the, you know, the Lincoln area that's on track, like I said, to become a higher school.
Well, and it's our smallest school too.
Footprint wise, yeah.
So it keeps it roughly the same, like I said. So Washington sort of stays, you know, really much the same as it is today. And then, and then allows for some of that southern open enrollment like is going on today. So it allows, now whether that will be less at some point, who knows, right?
And I do think for that small triangle, you know, from a safe pathway to school, I know people, they don't like to think about their high school or getting on the interstate and going to school, but the reality is, is that lots of people get on the interstate to get to school. And so for those people, that does seem a lot more convenient, a lot quicker than trying to navigate to get to Roosevelt. And so for the small, that small chunk.
Fifty-seventh and work their way over or sixty-ninth or whatever.
Yeah. So.
Maybe let's, instead of those middle school, because it could change on some things, maybe talk about, should we talk about grandfathering quickly and maybe sibling tag-alongs briefly? And then that way we can have a more in-depth consideration on Monday with the other middle school options. Still start with siblings. Well, anybody else can start. I've, I've been directing all this. Who would, who would like to start with siblings or and or?
Let's cut, let's, let's deal with the easy ones.
Okay, let's deal with the easy ones. Seniors. How's everybody feeling about seniors, grandfathering?
I think, I guess, I think we should.
I think they should have the option. It's painful to see how many kids that we're going to pull out of a school, but I think you should have the option as a senior to go.
Finish.
Finish where you were. Maybe they'll all go to Jefferson.
I would agree. I think you've gotten through three years of your education at that same school and that it makes sense to be able to finish your last year at that same location. If that's what you choose. Like you said, we may have people who like the idea and are excited about, you know, something that's being offered and great, we'll take you. That's awesome. But.
Or a new starter, new friends too.
It's like you said, Carly, Jefferson may, it may be smaller for a year, but it's still probably the biggest high, one of the bigger high schools in the state, right? Even without.
Yeah, yep, yeah, I agree. It's not like you're going from, you know, a big town to a small town school. It's, you're going to have the same type of feel. So. Nan, what do you think for seniors?
Yeah, I would agree. It's, we're going to have one year that is, is just going to be a little different.
Adjustment, yeah.
Yeah, like a, just in considering the students and all that factors into their four-year career of a, of a high school student, that they can graduate with their existing cohort at the high school.
Let's move to juniors. Thoughts on juniors?
I'm happy with seniors. I just think juniors can be at the new school. I'm happy to do the seniors. I think we have to draw the line. Sure, I'm going to lose some friends over that one.
I think we all will, but I think you're right. We have to, we have to draw the line somewhere.
I think my rationale is a couple of things. The, you know, when you look at it, you're in high school for four years, so you will have completed two. So you still have two left. And so, you know, going and joining a new club or a new team or making new friends is still, you still have half of your career left. Also looking at, you know, where boundaries and stuff like that, it's likely that many of your friends or people that you've known for a long time that maybe live in your same neighborhood would also be making that same decision. And so you're going to have familiar faces. You're going to know people at your school. And I think from a programming perspective too, I think all of us want Jefferson to hit the ground running and be able to offer as many classes and as many program, you know, different programming choices as we can. And so the more students that we can get in there that have the desire to take these classes, the more we can offer. And so, and for me, for the betterment of all of the students, the more people we can get starting in that school that very first year, the better off they're going to be long-term. And so that's, that'd be my rationale for saying similar to you guys, that really, I really support the seniors, but I feel like that's kind of where you have to draw the line.
I agree. And that's actually what worried me about the seniors even, because we can offer more if there's more kids there.
Right.
And so I get the senior alliance with their other buddies and want to do it, but.
But here's the other thing too, we're not, we're not, this isn't just one kid that we're making move. I mean, so it's, they're, you know, they could very well be moving with other classmates. And likely they will be. So it's not like we're making one kid move and be the, the new kid at the new school. It's, it's.
Everybody's a new kid. Everybody's going to be new.
And they still have two years in their new building. So it's not just one year. So it allows them to establish roots and friends and programs. And I agree, activities and academics, we need to be able to offer as many at Jefferson as we do at our current schools. Might not all be the same because we don't even all have the same at our, at our current three high schools, but the diversity of opportunities needs to be of equal value to those students.
Yeah, I think we, no, I have no emotional appeal and logic outside of hitting.
So I think we have a breaking point of where to draw that line. I could move on to middle school quickly.
I mean, are you worried about committee reports? Because I don't think any of us have it.
I was going to say, I was just watching the time. So for Southeast Tech, but I was, I was going to say, we can just wait on committee reports because I know most of us didn't have any. And the ones I had, there was no one who. Let's go on to middle school, grandfathering. Any discussion?
Nope.
I'm comfortable with that.
I, I feel like the sooner we can get students in with their cohort of students that they will then continue on to high school with, the better. And I mean this in the most positive way, but I feel like there's not a lot of like passion and allegiance for your middle school as there is compared to when you get to high school. And so, you know, I will proudly wear an Edison T-shirt and a sweatshirt because that's where my kids have gone. But I think you see more people who are more passionate about that four years in high school. And so again, they're probably moving with their friends and, you know, people are going to be kind of in that same group. And so I guess I feel the same way, even if you're an eighth grader. I think you can go and be a great leader at a new school potentially, if that's where your new boundaries lie.
Yeah, I would just concur with what I'm sensing all of you saying is let's get them over with their group and see them on to either our high school.
Siblings?
Yeah, might as well just hit them up, sibling tag-alongs.
Siblings, you know, thought really long and hard about that. And my first thought would be it's going to maybe create some hardship. But then after thinking a little bit, if you want to stay at your school as a senior, it may be inconvenient if there's other kids in the family that are going to have to go to a different school. That's a choice you're going to make. And I don't think we can really afford to have K through twelve kids move and have the opportunity to go where the senior went. So I'm going to say, I don't think the tag-alongs or siblings should be part. And now we're a small group.
We're not here to make friends.
Yeah, I'm here to do what's best for the majority amount of kids, which we all are. That's, that's what we're carrying. And it also is about how the families present it to their, their kids. I mean, this is a great opportunity. And I get the seniors, but I just think we need to stop with the siblings.
Other comments? I agree, you know, because it would become a logistical nightmare, I think, for us as a district if, it's like, where do we draw the line? Were you in high school with them? Were you in middle school while they were in that building? And there's going to be one year that it's hard. When those seniors get to grandfather and then maybe a sophomore or junior sophomore freshman is at a different building. I agree with you. And my promise to you, if I'm still on the board since the election results haven't been final, would be that we, as a district, are going to have to come with solutions on transportation for our families that there's a change. So that's why we're here. We are always here to listen and we'll, we'll work with you to come solutions, whether it's contacting other families. it's contacting other families at that district to get carpooling, whether, you know, talking, you know, getting posts on that for activities as well, we get that before and after school. So we, we'll just need to come up with solutions.
And I admit, I hadn't thought of either of the two things that you guys said about, it's a choice that that family is making to stay, and the other one is that it's just for a year, you know? So it, you know, I, I will someday have a senior and a freshman, so I get that, wanting to have your kids at the same school so they can travel together and all that. That's saying the senior will allow that to happen.
Good luck.
I guess, and the parents can make it happen. So, anyway, but it's, I, I think we have to draw the line now.
Well, I'm going to wrap it up here. Once again, we did not make any votes or determinations. We'll do our first voting on Monday, June 8th, open for public input. The meeting starts at 5:30. Please be here early before the meeting to sign up if you choose to speak. If you have a group, please pick a spokesperson for your group and they can acknowledge everybody, the numbers in their group because we have limited time and to have all that public input and we want to hear from all groups, not just one group. So I'd appreciate all that as well. Reach out to any of us board members through email or our phone numbers and the Let's Talk app. But I think we have a good roadmap to go down this path. And once again, thank you to everyone in the district for your assistance in going down this emotional change for a lot of families, but we knew when we approved the 85% vote of the bond, that these changes were going to come at us, so thank you.
I'm really grateful for the families that have given us calls, emailed, it just shows how much community involvement we do and that's what we're hearing. And like Doug said, we're listening to people, trying to give the options to everybody that works for everybody.
Exactly.
Yep.
The engagement is so key, Todd, you're, you're so right. And it is good to see that people engaged in this. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion in the second, all those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. We are adjourned, thank you. Take two minutes to start Southeast Tech.